Coming out tonight, hopefully we'll have more people join us before 6:30. And we will take a quick break after the business meeting just to get situated before the board workshop. So this is the one meeting a year that I open up because we have to elect a chair and a vice chair. So if you would, just please at this time stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
(inaudible)
So moving to 3.0 on the agenda, nomination and election of board chair. At this time, I would ask if there's any nominations from any board members?
Yeah, I'd like to nominate Steve for the board chair.
Hold second.
So the nomination of Steve in a second. Any other nominations for board chair?
I'd like to nominate Lou for the vice chairman.
Okay.
We're going to close the nominations for the chair.
Yeah, we'll close that. Any other nominations for chair, though? Hearing none? All those in favor of Steve August as chair?
It's anonymous again.
Thank you. So I will turn it over to Steve at this point to move on to the 4.0 election of vice chair.
Okay, thanks, everybody. Thanks. Okay, item 4.0, nomination and election of vice chair. Do we have any nominations? Bill?
I'd like to nominate Lou for reelection to that position.
Okay. So we have a nomination of Lou. Anita, second. Okay, so we have a motion and a second for Lou Ensel as vice chair. All in favor? Any opposed? No? Okay, thanks again. You're welcome. Okay, recognition and comments of the chair, 5.0. First, I'd like to welcome Lorna Ryan officially to the board. Thanks. We're excited to have you on, and I know you've got an unbridled enthusiasm for the tasks ahead. So thanks very much for joining us, Lorna. Thank you. Secondly, I just want to remind folks that we are, and Patrick sort of alluded to that, our intent tonight is to have a relatively short and quick business meeting and then move on to the workshop on mental health issues, which we'll follow at around 6:30. And hopefully we'll encourage folks to participate as we did at the first workshop with round tables. And we look forward to a good discussion on that, on those issues. Item 6.0, we have minutes for the meeting of December 16th. Do I have a motion to approve those minutes?
I'll make a motion to approve minutes.
Okay, we have a motion by Lorna, second by Lou. Take a look at the minutes. Any corrections? Adjustments? If not, all in favor of approving minutes as submitted? Any opposed? No? Thank you. Item 7.0, adjustments to the agenda. The only thing I have, and Vita had emailed and put on the table, a travel request for the motion bowl. And we could make that 14.4. Any other adjustments? No? Patrick? No? Okay. All right, item 8.0. Moving quickly, 8.0. So this is our first public session, and it's an opportunity for folks to address the board on items that are on the agenda. Does anyone want to address the board at this point? If not, okay. 9.0, staff report. Patrick?
Yeah, you have the detailed backup of the building project in your packet. But basically, interior partition framing, walls are going up in the new school, window installation. You can see the masonry work as you come down Congress Street. And that's tonight, as you drive down Congress Street with the lights in the building. You know, the building, you know, looks massive, but it's a, I think it's going to be a good balance between, you know, a nice, open concept as well as a kind of a homey, you know, environment that's conducive to learning. Also, the MSE wall, which is a fancy way of saying the bridge from Congress Street, that's being worked on heavily in the next couple of weeks. And as far as schedule goes, the principals are going to be busy, as well as dean, with furniture meetings and IT and AV meetings that are coming up over the next couple of months. And in the spring, we will go out to bid for all of those items.
Thanks, Patrick. Any questions of Patrick? Yep, Lorna?
I have more, just a confirmation. So we're looking at a February, kind of phasing into a February move-in date now. Is that right?
Yeah, I mean, December 15th is their deadline to be done. And, you know, we had conversations about over the holiday break right after, but, you know, if there's any delay at all, and just to do the punch list, as well as the schedule that we have for staff and students at Morse with midterms, just being able to have a little more time to move in and do this right, hopefully. And obviously, any move in the middle of a year causes a little angst from, you know, for students and staff, and we get that. So we're trying to be thoughtful in this process. But yeah, right now, we're looking at, you know, having students start the day after February break in the new facility.
Although I'm optimistic we can do it sooner, so. We are on schedule. We did have a pretty well-attended and a good facilities committee or building committee meeting last, or this week, last week. And I was very encouraged by what Ron had to report regarding progress and the work on the building. So it is exciting. It's going to be an exciting year. And I'm sure the community and the students are looking forward to completion of that facility, so. Okay, 11.0, student board representation reports. This is the first time, I think, we've had both of you sit at the same end of the table. So you'll have to tell us how well that works. Tanner, you ready?
So the first semester just ended last week with midterms, which went well. And a quick sports highlight, fellow junior Mason Savory had his 100th career wrestling win this past month. Yeah.
And I have two club highlights that I would like to share. One is looking forward, and then one is kind of looking back into the past. So to begin with the one that's looking forward, both of Morse's Ocean Bowl teams have been preparing for the past few, over the past three months, for the upcoming 2020 Nor'easter Ocean Bowl. I know we're all looking forward to this, and that's coming up this Saturday at the University of New Hampshire. And then about two to three weeks ago, the Green Club hosted a really exciting event. It was a clothing upcycle slash swap event where students were able to bring in old or unwanted clothing items that may even be damaged and swap them with another student or hem or repair them. And one really fun thing that I think everyone enjoyed doing was watching Ms. Lee, one of our librarians, show us how to use a sewing machine. And I know in the future, we're hoping to host a similar event.
Great. Thanks very much. Thanks. Any questions of Tanner Hayden? Nope? Okay, thanks, guys. Item 12.0, superintendent's report. Patrick?
Yeah, I'm just going to highlight a few things that were in your backup. First thing is, just early this month, the Woolwich Central School introduced a kindness day to seventh and eighth graders. And it was a powerful day that had students reflect on their everyday actions and maybe how they could treat each other better, but also reflecting on the things that they're doing in their school for random act of kindness. BMS seventh grade expedition on ocean sustainability was highlighted as one of the case studies for the report on senses of community-based environmental learning. Many of our seventh grade staff traveled to the State House on January 13th to be part of the celebration. And I think I sent that to you guys in an email, but it was, I think there were maybe 10 other districts that were highlighted. And just lastly, Morse, I would, I've always been impressed with the amount that they do for students when it comes to preparation for SAT and the ACT. And recently, they had PSATs and pastries, and 25 students and parents attend. And again, just giving them multiple opportunities to practice and prepare for those important tests if students are planning to go to college. And that's it.
Thanks, Patrick. Any questions of Patrick? Just how are we doing with snow days, Patrick? I know we...
We've used four, five at Woolwich, but that was out of our control. So we've used four at this point. And we have talked about if we do use five prior to February break, that recommendation may be to do something different with that March, March 20, 20th or 21 PD day is maybe have students come that day so that we don't end up going too late in June. But we'll cross that bridge when we get to it.
Thanks, Patrick. Any questions of Patrick? Nope? Okay, thanks. Deb? Oh, there you are. My God, moved. You are a long ways away.
Me? Yeah. Okay. Watch out, folks, when you come up to this podium tonight with this cord hanging here. You know, I have to think about workers' comp. So tonight, we're going to review the December financial report. We're six months into the year, and on the expense side, we've spent about 41%, which is right in line with what we spent last year. We have received 15, almost $16 million in revenue, which is 48%, which is in line, once again, with what happened last year. As far as other things happening in the finance department, as far as payroll, all the tax paperwork has been issued and was filed today. Yippee. It's out of here for the end of January. Auditor came to the January finance meeting and reviewed the 1819 audit. If anybody had questions or wanted to have a copy of the audit, certainly reach out and let me know. Budget process has begun, and I have most, I'm getting close to having everything into the system. I'll be working on benefits tomorrow, but then we will review everything with the administrators and then the finance committee and eventually to the board, I believe, in March. So that's it on the general fund. The Morse High School project, we have spent $33 million out of the $75 million budget, so 45%. Just one more thing on the revenue for tuition. Our tuition rates did come in from the state, and they're a little over 5% increase for the RSU. So basically, that means an additional about $28,000 in revenue for us. Questions?
Any questions for Jen?
Deb, do we still have grandfathered kids between West, from West Bath?
We only have one left.
One left. And that student is tuitioned, right?
That student, we receive a credit.
Credit, okay.
Okay, any other questions for Deb? Do you have the budget scheduled, Deb? I mean, well, you said it comes to the board in March. I think our first reading of the budget is at the March meeting. Is that correct? Yep. Okay, so. No? Okay, maybe we can get that out to the public generally so they're aware of what that budget cycle looks like and the important dates as we go along. 12.3, in your packet, you have a list of fundraiser requests, and that's, Patrick provides that as an informational item, doesn't require any action on our part, but just so you're aware of what fundraising activities are underway in the schools, in the various buildings. 13.0, old business. 13.1 is review of the 1920 goals. Jen, do you want to walk us through that?
Yep, give me just a second, sorry. Let me just find them.
While you're looking, can I go back to Deb? Deb? I know you don't have the mic, but on special ed, on finance, you don't, do you see any issues arising in the special ed categories that might cause spending overages?
Not right now.
Okay. We're pretty much on plan or on target. Okay, thank you. Jen?
Thank you for that excellent moment there.
All right.
Okay, so just a review of what we've been able to cover so far this evening. Our goal number one continues to be the Morse Building Construction Project, and we've gotten an update from Patrick on that. Can you continue to update each board meeting for that and stay as close to being on track in terms of our students being able to take advantage of that wonderful new building? I think that we were all included with an update from our communications position. You've probably seen more press releases and more communications now since we've had her help with that, and I think that's really helping the public in general understand what's going on within our school buildings. One of the things that we are talking about in terms of our response to intervention was really understanding all aspects of our students' lives, and I think tonight's workshop on mental health will definitely inform the board on those really important issues. So I think that's, we've accomplished that goal. And then the last goal is considering the logistics of a later start time, and I know you don't have a report from that yet, but I know there's been a lot of work on that. It's a complex issue, and I know that we're continuing to being able to research all the options for that. And I'm sure that we'll be hearing some reports on that soon. So I think we're on track of meeting our goals.
Okay, thanks, Jen. Any questions of Jen?
The new kid has another question.
Sure.
Sorry, I'll keep it brief. So that on the communications, monitoring of the communications position, is that, remind me, is that a role also coordinating, like, with all the schools on social media posts or really just sort of focusing on specific projects and press releases and the newsletter?
Yeah, I mean, press release, newsletters are the main things, but she also works with principals in schools about their websites as far as ideas, suggestions, or other social media platforms that they'd like to try and also make us more consistent.
Okay. And on number four, I'm not sure we mentioned the monitoring, the dropout prevention committee that they meet annually? Is that right? Is that Dave?
I mean, Eric can speak to it, but usually three to four times a year is what we're...
Thanks, Lorna. Okay, any other questions for Jen on goals? No? Okay, thank you. 14.0, new business. 14.1, personnel item. Patrick?
Yeah, I'd like to nominate Robin Monahan as a new special education teacher at Woolwich. And the interviewing committee met a while back, interviewed. We had two applicants, were very impressed. We had three teachers and one administrator on the committee. And currently, well, Robin has bachelor's, master's, and plus 30. And her experience right now, she's at Lewiston School System, and prior to that, she was in SAD 75 as a special ed teacher as well.
Okay, thanks, Patrick. This isn't, that's not... It is. Okay, so this is an action item. Patrick has nominated, recommended Robin Monahan for a special ed teacher. Do I have a motion?
A motion for Lou.
I have a motion by Lou, second by Bill. Any questions? No? All in favor? Any opposed? No? Thank you. Thanks. Are there any other vacancies currently in the district that we're trying to fill?
We might have a...
But nothing pressing? Good. 14.2, this is the review of board committee assignments. Vita sent the list out again of current assignments. I know from conversation with Patrick, I think Lorna's expressed interest to serve on the finance committee and perhaps be the legislative contact. Is that right, Lorna? Okay, thank you. And there is another ad hoc committee added, which doesn't appear on this list, and that's our Waste Reduction Committee, which the board authorized, I'll use that word, last spring. I currently chair that committee. We've met twice, or three times, I think. And it's really very interesting, trying to induce anybody else to join me on that committee. We've got some student participation. There's participation from each building in the district, and faculty member and student participate from each building. And it's just fascinating to hear the kids engage. I have to say, none of them sit back and give any deference to the adults in the room. They're all at the table, and they all participate. It's really terrific to see. So anyways, that committee meets once a month as well. We meet at 3:30, and I know for those of you who have work responsibilities, 3:30 is not a great time, but if there's anyone that can join me on that committee, I'd welcome them. So we'll add, we'll add Waste Reduction as an ad hoc committee to the list. Again, you know, we don't have to negotiate assignments at this point, but if you're on a committee and want to move to another one, please let me and Patrick know. If you're interested in joining a committee as an added responsibility, please let us know as well. Okay? Yep, Bill? I mean, I attend building committee meetings for the new high school, but not, but that's not the facilities committee, so.
Facilities, everything else.
Yep, yep, yep.
How late do your meetings run? Is that eight?
Yeah, eight tonight.
I don't think I can do that, sorry.
Yeah, we can adjust, I mean, we can adjust meeting times. I mean, that's a solution as well, so give some thought to it, Megan, if you can.
And I know I expressed that, I just, I can no longer commit to the shiriki exchange one if anyone else is willing. I think they're going to be meeting now Tuesday evenings, and they meet once a month, but I just haven't been able. It's hard with my children and the schedule and stuff.
Okay, okay, very good. Okay, thanks. 14.3 is the overnight field trip request. We have, we have three of them, and to, yeah, keep a little time, just my thought as well, just to keep a, take a little bit less time. We could, if everyone's okay, we could take all three at once.
Yeah, I would move to approve all three field trip requests.
Second, Deb.
Okay, we have a motion by Lou, second by Jen, by Lorna. We'll take all three requests at once, so let me just go through them quickly for the record. We have a request, a Morse High request for Coral, all-state chorus up in Orno. A second request for BR CTC in Bangor for skills competition. And the request that was on the table today was for the Ocean Bowl, which is down in New Hampshire. Do I have a motion to approve those three requests?
Yes.
Oh, you did? Okay. That wasn't just...
Before you wrote, you went through it.
Yeah, that wasn't just to take them up. That's three. Okay. All in, any questions?
Nope.
No? All in favor?
He's pretty rough.
Any opposed? Sorry about that. You're sitting on my bad ear, so. 15.0, public session. This is an opportunity for the public to make any comment on issues that aren't limited to the agenda. Does anyone want to address the board? If not, thank you. 16.0, set the next meeting and location. We, the schedule is to meet, the next meeting, February 24th, here at the middle school at 6 o'clock. And I think after that, hopefully, we'll start to rotate to the other schools. The idea is, once we get into the budget cycle, we'll be going to the other schools and hopefully give an opportunity to highlight concerns that might apply to those buildings, so. 17.0, and pretty much at 6:30, we're going to exit from the general session. We're not adjourning the meeting yet, so board members don't disappear, but we're exiting from the general session and going to our workshop. And from this point, we'll turn it over to Katie and Patrick.
Yeah, we'll just do a quick, two-minute break just to get set up, and then we'll begin.
Okay, thank you.
Good evening, everyone. We're going to continue to use the microphone since the crowd just got a little bit bigger. I'm Katie Joseph. I'm the assistant superintendent here, and this is the second board workshop of the year. The first earlier this year was on STEM, and it was much more discussion-based. Just so everybody knows, this is much more informational. There will be time at the end for small group discussions, but we'll probably only spend about 15 minutes doing that portion. In the beginning, we're going to hear from three different speakers on the topic of mental health. I just wanted to remind everybody that we did set some norms for our first evening a couple months ago, and I'm going to quickly tell everybody what those are so we're all on the same page. Oh, except my... All are encouraged to participate. All ideas should be respected. All information discussed will be shared and followed up at a later date. All comments should be focused on the proposed topic during the discussion portion, and all should speak one at a time. In terms of the purpose of this workshop, just quickly before I introduce our first speaker, the topic overall is mental health. In terms of where we're going to head with that topic, because it is so broad, it's two focus areas, one being mental health. What does that look like in students? What does that look like for our community? And the second portion is, what does that mean for our classrooms and what are the, some of the supports that we're providing as a district for students who are struggling? And with that, I'm going to hand the microphone over to Dr. Deborah Hagler, who has graciously decided to teach us all a lot about this topic, okay?
Thank you. So I am going to provide just a brief overview of the intersection of mental health with the school system. And the cliche, "It takes a village," I use all the time, pardon me, but I really feel like the medical community, the schools, and the whole community to help kids needs to really interact and cross-collaborate more to help our youth. So I hope tonight, just to touch on a few areas... So, so I hope tonight, just to touch on a few areas, one, is mental health really just the absence of pathology, and we can discuss that amongst ourselves and, and the group, and I'm going to talk about that in a second. What's the impact on education? Talk a little bit about the school's role and the impact in the classroom, and just give some thoughts on future suggestions. And one of the handouts that was on one of the tables was some of the programming that Midcoast Hospital Community Health and Wellness has to offer to put into schools to help kids from a preventative point of view. So, if you went to medical school thirty somewhere so years ago, just saying, you learned first normal physiology and then pathology, and that was your definition of what mental health was, so if you didn't have pathology, that was considered fine. And I, I would argue and say to you, I, I'm not sure that's where we are right now. So I pulled this definition from the World Health Organization, and I like it, and I'm going to throw it out to you all to think about for tonight's conversation. Mental health is a state of well-being in which an individual realizes his or her own abilities, can cope with the normal stresses of life, can work productively, and is able to make a contribution to his or her community. What do I like about that? I like the idea of realizing your own abilities. I like the idea that you can cope. Life is not a straight and smooth highway, as we all know in this room. And I like the idea of being productive and able to contribute to your community. That has an essence of thriving, and I think for educators, and for all of us who have children, that's something that we all want them to aspire to. So I would say, what I learned in medical school, that if you don't have pathology, you're okay, is not something that we all aspire to, and I think we want to think about the world of possibility when it comes to our children. But I would say right now, that if you work with kids, you have the suspicion that things are not all right for a group of our kids. So, the American Psychological Association did a survey of youth, and actually, a survey of the nation, to talk about mental health, because if you look around and you feel around in our culture, things don't feel so good right now. But youth between the ages of fifteen and twenty-one were the most likely to report that they did not enjoy good mental health. If you're an adolescent, your chance of being diagnosed with an anxiety disorder over the course of that adolescent lifetime is about one in three. And probably most distressing, for those of us who work with teenagers, is that the rate of depression among adolescents has probably doubled in the last decade. And even more concerning is the suicide rate has gone up alarmingly. So this is data from the CDC, and on the left here are girls, and this is boys, and this is, this is national data, so you can see in almost every age group, actually, the suicide rate has gone up. The dark, darker color is nineteen ninety-nine, and the bright green is two thousand seventeen. These are our ten to fourteen-year-old girls, and you can see, even though the number is small, the rate in ten to fourteen-year-old girls has increased by about seventy-five percent over the last decade. That's pretty alarming for ten to fourteen-year-old girls. And the rate in girls, in the fifteen to twenty-four-year-old category, has increased tremendously. The rate in boys has increased as well over the last decade, but the numbers have not increased as much. Boys are much more likely to commit suicide than, than young girls, but the rates are alarming and going up. Just some data from the recent Mihlas surveys in, in Maine, thirty-two percent of our high school students are reporting that they felt sad or hopeless in the last two weeks. For Sagatahawk County, the number was a little bit higher, at thirty-five point seven percent. And I put this in here because trauma and repeated bullying is really associated with depression and, and suicide in, in youth, and particularly for some subgroups of youth, so almost a quarter of high school students reported being bullied in Maine, and in Sagatahawk County, the numbers were higher. For middle school students, they're not immune to this either, twenty-five percent of them reported sad, sadness or hopelessness in the last two weeks, and about, this is, I'm sorry, this breaks my heart, half of middle school students, by the time they get to middle school, reported being bullied over the course of their lifetime, with the rates in Sagatahawk matching the state. So really, for schools, mental illness is a huge issue, because half of all symptoms of mental illness that will continue on into adulthood present in adolescence, with three-quarters of most diagnosis being, occurring by the age of twenty-four. Most substance use disorders will present in adolescence, and the age of anxiety disorders, the mean age of diagnosis of anxiety disorders is around age eleven, with the mean age of diagnosis of depressive disorders between the ages of eleven and thirteen. Oh, thank you. And the other thing that people, people sometimes don't consider is, once one child has one diagnosis, there is often significant overlap. So if you are diagnosed with anxiety, your risk of being diagnosed with a depressive disorder goes up, and in some studies and series, the rate of overlapping diagnosis was as high as seventy-five percent. So, and I'm, I'm talking about things that a lot of people have heard of, and this is not an exhaustive list, but ADHD, anxiety, depression, OCD, oppositional defiant disorder, which we usually see in younger kids, conduct disorders often diagnosed in, in older youth, and then one of the most severe mental illnesses often presents for youth in early to late adolescence, schizophrenia. So all of these often have symptoms that are going to show up in school and affect their functioning in the classroom. If you look at the DSM, which is the cookbook of diagnosis that we all use to make mental health diagnosis, they all have lists of symptoms, and most of them have something that will affect their function in the classroom. Inability to concentrate is listed on several diagnoses, so depression, anxiety, ADHD. Perfectionism is often found in anxiety, OCD. Low motivation is seen in kids with depression, often anxiety, sometimes ADHD. Memory is affected in most of those diagnoses. In kids with anxiety, they often avoid difficult things or situations, and kids with ADHD, if something needs sustained attention, they will avoid doing that task. And kids with anxiety or ADHD often can avoid attention to detail because their brain is some, somewhere else, or OCD. Often too, social functioning is impaired with these diagnoses, and the one I think teachers most often will notice is irritability, the mood changes on a dime, now sometimes that's hard to tell from normal adolescents, but that can affect classroom work, the social situation in the class, when you have to do group projects, group presentations. Sometimes a child will just withdraw into the background of the classroom. You had somebody that was raising their hand all the time, participating in class discussions, doing things, all of a sudden, they're really silent or, or quiet in the background. In younger children, a whole host of diagnoses can sometimes just present with tantrums. And then you have youth that become really defiant, or are defiant in the classroom, and are oppositional to authority figures, which can make operating and running a smooth classroom very challenging for both the teacher and for peers. So, you can see that the classroom is affected, and, and behavior and academic achievement and social functioning is often very much affected. So how come the school is critical? Well, often, these behaviors are taking place in the classroom and affecting academic attainment, social functioning, and the, the domino effect of this on the child's functioning in the peer group, and then further academic attainment is, is clear. But school is, is critical, and I put the picture of silos up, because the medical community is really used to operating completely in our little silo. We operate in our office, we send a diagnosis in, a piece of paper, sometimes a medication into the school, and nobody has no idea what's going on or best practice. We are trying to move beyond that, and the idea of building a team and a web and of support around the child is what will lead, hopefully optimally, to the best outcome for that child. So in my mind, the school has a critical role in lots of things, and I put the picture of the web up to remind me, to talk about the ecosystem of youth, and that children come to school doing the best that they can, and are supported by that web, and they're inherently resilient, but when one thing is going on in that web, it has a ripple effect and vibrates in other corners of the web. So if something is going on with the family, it's going to vibrate and go and affect other operations in the web, the friends, the school functioning. If the web is strong and well-knit together, kids are so resilient that they can bounce back, but if one arm of the web breaks, even if the rest of the web is put together, that, that youth will do well. When the whole web collects, is, or is not well-developed, then, then the youth is going to have more problems. So I see the school having a critical, critical role in many aspects that affect youth mental, mental, including prevention, early identification, treatment, and recovery. To talk about prevention, you have to talk about what are risk factors and what would be protective factors. So we'll talk about risk factors really quickly first. Probably the biggest risk factor for youth with mental illness is having a parent with mental illness, and I'll back up and say, a parent with untreated or unsupported mental illness in the home. Parents that get support and treatment for mental illness, their, their children often do just fine, but there is a strong genetic component for a lot of these illnesses. Parent with a substance use disorder in the home, again, treatment and support makes a huge difference for children living in that home. Early childhood trauma, we've learned a lot about in the last decade, and adverse childhood experiences, poverty, and I'm going to talk a little bit about sleep, and I gave you guys some paperwork about sleep, because in my mind, you look for universal public health interventions that can help kids, and sleep is a huge one that has deteriorated with all the technology in our life, and it, and it's causing havoc with youth mental health. Protective factors, self-efficacy, being in charge of, and having some power and control over things in your world has been shown to be a protective factor for youth mental health. Being resilient, there's a lot of work around resiliency and youth, and being able to cope with the normal things in life, being able to bounce back. What is your social circumstance, and what is your social support? Not only for youth, but it turns out for their families as well. Families that are well-supported, that go through tough times, their youth are more likely to recover and do well. Connecting to a caring adult, that one caring adult can be a powerful, a powerful life preserver when things become traumatic. And then connection and engagement with your school turns out to be a huge protective factor. So there, when we talk about prevention strategies, we talk about three types, universal, then there's targeted and selected. Universal, you do for everyone, so everyone can benefit from, from some type of preventive strategies, so we all enjoy good mental health, and we all can get to that point where we can all thrive. Then there are more selective programs, which I'm not going to really talk about, but those involve screening and trying to identify higher-risk groups, those generally tend to be more costly, and as we all know, with a lot of mental health issues, there's a lot of stigma. When you talk about instituting more selective screening and programming in the schools, that comes with a lot more responsibility and stigma, there, there are plenty of evidence-based programs to do that, but it, it becomes harder and harder for a community to implement that kind of work, although that happens all over the country in certain circumstances. And then there are more targeted programs to prevent, prevent further onset in, in populations that have early signs of mental illness. But what I want to focus on as a community are universal preventive strategies. So there's well, well-defined, early and later, social emotional learning curriculums that are, that have been adopted in different communities around the country and around the world, that teach kids about their emotions, about emotional regulations, about behavior within the classroom, and give them a literacy in, in their emotional health. And these, these programs pass, now I'm going to blink on the acronym, Promoting Alternate Thinking Strategies, teaches kids conflict resolution, and it's, and it's a curriculum that starts as early as kindergarten and goes through sixth grade. And this has been actually studied for the last thirty years, was invented, I think, in Australia, and the outcomes have been studied broadly in the academic literature. And it has been shown to decrease symptoms of anxiety and aggression, and make classrooms run much smoother in, in, in school districts where it's been implemented. So those types of curriculum can, particularly with anxiety, decrease symptoms of anxiety. There's a lot of work around exercise and movement, kids that exercise on a regular basis, and it doesn't have to be a sports team, but kids that are outside and moving, and there's a lot of work around exercise and ADD, tend to function better in the classroom and tend to enjoy better mental health. There's mental health literacy programs that are teaching older kids about feelings, motions, early, early signs of mental illness, so that they feel comfortable talking about that and reaching out for help. There are lots of, there's lots of research and work around resiliency-building programs, the, of the FRIENDS acronym, I had to write that down. That is a British program that is recommended by the World Health Organization for kids in middle school and high school, that teaches general resiliencies-building skills, and that acronym is FEELINGS, REMEMBERING TO RELAX, I CAN DO IT, I TRY MY BEST, EXPLORING SOLUTIONS AND COPING PLANS, REWARDING YOURSELF, YOU HAVE DONE YOUR BEST, DON'T FORGET TO PRACTICE, SMILE, STAY CALM, AND SUPPORT, AND TAP INTO YOUR SUPPORT NETWORK. But they teach, they teach all of these skills in a prolonged curriculum throughout the school year to help teenagers, and then the other equivalent is ZIPPY'S FRIENDS, which is for younger, for elementary school students that teach the same type of skills. There's a lot of work on mindfulness, and, oh, okay, thank you. There's a lot of work on mindfulness-based stress reduction, and the hospital is working to try to implement some programs around our community for, specifically for teens, to help them regulate some of that neuroadrenaline and the stress. And then there's a lot of research about sleep and improving adolescent sleep, and one thing that has, there's been research showing that starting later helps teens get more sleep, which improves mental health. Schools have a huge role in early identification, as, as discussed before, many of the symptoms affect classroom functioning. So if educators are aware of what they're seeing and can key into youth that have a change of functioning in the classroom, or may not be functioning up to expectation, they may be able to reach out and intervene at an earlier point at the onset of mental illness. So a change in academic performance, a change in social functioning, the other, the other issue that really is flagging struggling with mental illness sometimes is chronic absenteeism, so school avoidance, depression, when you're not motivated enough to get up and go out to school and get to school, that, when students start to rack up a lot of consistent absences, that can be a flag that, that they may need more help. The hospital offers trainings in youth mental health first aid for early identification. The, the hospital is offering training in something called Sources of Strength, which is a suicide prevention program, which teaches peers to help connect peers to a caring adult to helps, help youth. And then for substance use, often having a peer say something to help them connect them to sources of treatment is a very effective way to get kids in early before they are, are having more trouble with a problem. So the last, the last thing, schools are often critical in treatment and recovery, and I'll say, a lot of times, you don't know. So a child may be absent for a while, and the school is not involved, but they can be critical, one, in connecting, it's great now that there are counselors in the school, because that's where the kids are, and getting them back in and connected with their support system is huge, so having counseling available in the school is, is amazing. Some kids are taking medication in the schools, and that's, that can be of great service to that youth. Understanding that, that youth, as you can see, their cognitive functioning may be affected, and that often treatments can take as long as twelve weeks to start to be effective. If you have a child coming back into the classroom, they're cognitively, they may not be ready to do all the work that's being thrown at them, which can further drive symptoms. So I think the medical profession has a lot of work in really helping and communicating with the school through active 504 plans, so that, that people understand where kids are, particularly when we're titrating medication. Almost every one of the more common diagnosis, anxiety, depression, all have significant sleep dysfunction, and when kids aren't sleeping, and, and they're, we're titrating medication and trying to get them back to normal functioning, or some level of, of normal functioning. get them back to normal functioning or some level of, of normal functioning, functioning in the classroom actually just showing up may be the biggest, biggest score for us at that point. And until things are getting better and they're getting appropriate therapy and treatment, I, I think of it a little bit as a concussion. So their brain may not be ready for the full academic load because they can't, they're not able to, to memorize and do or concentrate until they've had some effective therapy. So working closely with schools and families so that everyone in that, that youth sphere understands what's going on to help that child progress and get back to their normal level of functioning and their normal world is, is how to get that child back to a, to a road to recovery in my mind. So the school plays a critical role in that, that area of functioning as well. And at the end of, and I'm going to make this available to the, to the school board and everyone here, but at the end, there's a whole bunch of resources, including programs that the hospital will, can institute, but there's a list of resources for more information about resiliency, information about social emotional learning, starting school later. And then I often will send parents to the Clay Center at the Massachusetts General Hospital Department of Psychiatry to get information about mental illness, youth, mine institute, NAMI, if you need more information about ADHD. But these are all good, general, and HealthyChildren.org is from the American Academy of Pediatrics. You can put in any diagnosis and it will give you information. But these will all steer people to more specific information about any diagnosis. But I think working, it, it's great to see everybody here tonight. It's, it is the way forward for our children is, we want them to thrive, and the way to do that is to work together as a team to make things better for them. So thank you for your time.
Thank you so much, Dr. Hagler. Next, we are going to have Jamie Dorr come up. She is the president of the Bath Skate Park and also the founder of the Midcoast Community Alliance.
Good evening, everyone. Midcoast Community Alliance began in 2016 after another youth suicide loss in our community. It grew from four members to over 30 organizations within just a few months. Members of Midcoast Community Alliance today include students and parents, law enforcement agencies, school districts, city council members, churches, community members, suicide survivors, and healthcare providers. In addition, our partnership with and support from members such as Midcoast Hospital and RSU One has been integral in building a community of mental health support for our youth. Various key stakeholders have been at the table from the beginning with expertise, guidance, and belief in our mission. For the first two years, we spent talking with students and parents and mental health providers. And about two years into that, we decided that we could really have something great at the Bath Youth Meeting House and Skate Park. At the time, it had limited funding, so we had limited staff, and it was seeing about 40 students every day. Over the past year, we've been working to redevelop that, and we are now seeing an average of 70 students every day from middle school to early high school. When we look back over 2019, we engaged with 480 youth between the ages of five and 21. These young people signed into our after-school programs nearly 7,000 times. Our after-school programs now consist of youth leadership opportunities, cooking classes, art classes, sewing, tutoring, summer math programs, and simply a safe place to hang out. We believe in physical activity as a very important part of mental wellness, so we have a personal trainer that comes in once a week and works with kids. We have a wellness activity that's happening right now, but they, we also just do fun things like kickball and basketball. We also offer free scooter and skateboard club every day after school. We now serve dinner three times a week, thanks to the generosity of a lot of community members that come in. We also provide free after-school snacks and take-home food provided by the Bath Area Backpack Program. Last August, we held our second annual Set for Success Back to School Celebration here at Bath Middle School and provided free backpacks and school supplies to 624 students living in the RSU One School District. In 2019, we hired a youth outreach coordinator from Mary Meeting Project, who currently supports 40 to 50 students in RSU One Brunswick and MSAD 75 that are facing homelessness. She works directly with youth to increase their school attendance and help stabilize their school and community life, including assisting them with access to food, metal and, men, sorry, medical and mental health care, school supplies, clothing, and shelter. We work to wrap around youth and families who are facing significant challenges without judgment, only a desire to support and connect to help where needed. With parent permission, we work directly with Bath Middle School in Morse to help students stay on track or get back on track if attendance or schoolwork begins to decline. And we work with those students to find out what's really going on. We work to connect students to resources by bringing services into the skate park. Last week, we had a student who's tried to quit vaping a number of times. She is now meeting with a nurse from Midcoast Hospital that comes and meets with her on a weekly basis so that she can be free of that addiction. Last week, we held an adult education info seminar with Mary Meeting Adult Education. One student who's been out of school for about two and a half years signed up, and another one is slowly gathering information but hasn't quite made the commitment yet. We provide support and guidance for those who have graduated but are unsure of what to do next. Just this morning, we had one student who began the BIW workforce training at SMCC and another who passed his driver's license exam. We're now also approved sites with the University of Maine and Augusta and USM and have just welcomed our first two interns. Through all of this, we've worked hard to ensure that students know where to turn to if they're feeling sad or hopeless or frustrated or just feel like giving up. I encourage everyone here today to learn about mental illness, what it is and what it is not. Learn how to have open conversations with the youth in your lives and take a youth mental health first aid class, which is offered by Midcoast Hospital. Typically, they're at the Bath Rec Department. We have one tomorrow morning, but we also will probably have one in March. Suicide prevention is up to all of us, as Dr. Hagler said. Families can't do it alone, schools can't do it alone, MCA can't do it alone, but by working together, I know we can make a difference. At MCA, we feel like we're only just scratching the surface of what's to come for our youth. And I'll share a short video to give you an inside look at what a typical day is like at the skate park. I welcome you to stop in and visit. We love to have Lorna Ryan, who stops in pretty frequently and was the, had the idea for our summer math program last summer, which was an incredible hit with students.
So, so far, we've had two forces to be reckoned with up here this evening, and now I'm going to invite a third person up who's the same. So Susannah Lynch is going to be speaking about what this looks like in the classroom here in RSU One and some of the supports we provide for students. She's a fifth grade teacher at Woolwich.
Good evening. It's true. My name is Susannah Lynch. I taught at Fisher Mitchell for 10 years and currently teach at Woolwich Central School for the past five, give or take. I'm here to represent merely one perspective from the trenches of our public school system. This important topic tonight is not someone else's problem. By having a dialogue here, we're attempting to change the tide and the stigma associated with mental health and suicide. So I'll share my perspective and then show a short video here to illustrate some suggestions that I have. So when I was asked, does mental health, mental health impact student learning? The answer is a resounding yes. Unequivocally, students are impacted every day by their mental health, which can run the gamut of anxiety, self-esteem, inattention issues, to emotional regulation, to mental illness. Additionally, we have students walking through the door who've endured traumatic situations that are in constant crisis, which contribute to their toxic stress. Anxiety is a more common attribute in students than it has been in, I think, the last five years. Almost, almost 45% of children in the United States have endured an adverse childhood experience, according to a 2016 National Survey on Children's Health. It's tremendous. Students cannot access information or articulate accurately their emotions when impacted by chronic stress. Years ago, it was just the second day of school, and I had a student ask in this tiny voice if we could go talk in the hall. The student handed me Protection from Abuse, it was a court order, which described a domestic disturbance the night before. And their hands were shaking, their body was shaking, and the student whispered to me, "I was told to give this to you." I was stunned just reading in detail what transpired. And, you know, initially, when I was asked to go talk in the hall, I thought, you know, maybe they had forgotten lunch money or something much more pedestrian, but no. This student's brain was programmed for survival mode, and there was no way that they could recalibrate from this experience and just transition into, you know, my lesson about goal-setting for the year. So what do we do as the teacher in that moment? Because learning has been eclipsed. That is evident. Essentially, in that moment, my objective was to try to connect and calm as best I could and to comfort. And all the while, I'm trying to do this while monitoring 20 or so other children through the classroom, you know, window into the, into the classroom to monitor. They're trying a new morning routine. So in my mind, I'm already thinking, okay, we have until dismissal at 2:55 together until this student is back on a bus returning to where this all happened. So switching gears a little bit here. In basic terms, the automated part of our nervous system is comprised of a few parts, and two of which are called the sympathetic and the paras- parasympathetic. Our sympathetic nervous system automatically activates when our brain alerts us to danger and triggers that fight-flight-or-freeze reaction. The brain's ability for reason and emotional control is completely hijacked. In my experience over the years, there's been a surge in students that have a chronically heightened sympathetic nervous system. They are on high alert when managing emotions, social interactions on the kickball field, and relationships, whether it's at home or at school. They're not really managing emotions, they're just reacting. And school is where students and teachers spend most of our waking hours together. By default, it therefore becomes the most consistent environment. It's warm, kids are guaranteed a meal, for the most part, their behavior is supervised, and, you know, they have a guaranteed interaction with their peers. And so in the face of the tsunami of technology and, you know, distorted mass media, is in the face of literally younger and younger recipients, it's, it's created a paradigm shift in our society. So I'm very relieved that this community can gather in one parade, in one place, in one room, in real time, and dialogue about this national epidemic around mental health. It's necessary and needed. In recent years, the demands on the classroom teacher are more often about managing students' anxieties, which impede their ability to access their learning. And yes, there's been a steady increase in mental health issues during my time in education. I mean, 17 years ago, we didn't really talk about any of this on a school-wide level. So what do we do? What do we do as teachers? How, how can I soothe and educate an anxious brain? Well, one way is through acknowledgement. Kids must have someone who sees them. Kids need to know that they're not marginalized, that they are important and that they matter to me. Students filter in each morning, and I make sure that I look each one of them in the eye, and I say good morning, and I say their name. And they need to know that I'm expecting them to then reciprocate that greeting. That simple practice is my litmus test for each student each and every day. A second way to be proactive is attachment, just building a relationship. Those interactions are the cornerstone of a connection. Attachment is really the basis of most all of our meaningful human relationships. Having a morning meeting or a closing meeting at the end of the day is also a practice that's very common among my colleagues. That is another way to build camaraderie and, and to build attachment and relationships with kids. And a third recommendation I have is to actively incorporate a more progressive approach for kids at any grade level, and that's through mindfulness. I know, Dr. Hagler, you mentioned that. Okay, so back to the nervous system for a moment. So the accompanying part of our, our nervous system is, one part is the parasympathetic nervous system, and it's activated by breath, and it becomes awakened or aroused. When it's aroused, the, it allows the body and the brain to calm down. I'm using it right now. It balances, so the parasympathetic balances out the sympathetic nervous system, and really, that's the basis for mindfulness, is essentially breathing and activating that parasympathetic system. And what a trendy term, mindfulness. What the heck is it? I didn't have any experience with it at all until, well, I was pretty much the biggest skeptic of mindfulness, but after I, I suffered a severe concussion, I was forced to take a medical leave of absence. That sounds like a vacation. It was more like being on house arrest while my sympathetic nervous system was in absolute overdrive. My cognitive therapist at the time recommended the Stress Reduction and Mindfulness Course at Midcoast Hospital, and so with really nothing left to go to, I took an eight-week course in an effort to recover from post-concussion syndrome. And in the beginning, it was the most torturous Tuesdays of my life. I had an unquiet mind, and my overthinking flogged me at every one of those sessions. But like anything new, it's sort of a mindset makeover on more of a philosophical level. When I began, I was so determined to reach this tranquil peace and just zen out in this calm place. That was my interpretation of what mindfulness was. But essentially, I was missing the whole point at first. Mindfulness is a skill to be developed by each individual to address his or her per-. life. And like physical exercise, it requires routine practice to become effective and essentially yield the desired results. So, mindfulness is essentially a non-medical, secular antidote that is based in science and empirical data. In recent years, it's proven especially efficient and helpful in education to calm and connect and engage all students, not just challenging behaviors. And the basic material to implement this concept with students is breathing. As a community that's looking to proactively address the mental health of kids kindergarten through 12th grade, it seems a logical next step. Mindfulness improves self-compassion, helps manage depressive thoughts, emotional regulation, focus, and engagement. So, think about this. When our board and our district is selecting academic programs, it follows that same criteria. We look in math and reading program at scientific studies, at all the empirical data. We ask, you know, does this support lifelong skills? And there's always this foundational question with educators, whenever we're trying to make decisions or what, make decisions, and that question is, what is best for the students? Because tonight, that's obviously why we're all here. Thanks for your time.
Thank you for your mindfulness and honesty. That was wonderful. So, I know that I learned something new, many things new, and am eager to talk, and so we're going to transition to that part of the evening. There are tables back here. Last time we counted off, I think this time with so many people, just pick a round table to sit at, and then our administrators will all be at least one at a table to help guide the discussion, really only to reference these three questions that we were thinking we'd focus on for about 10 minutes, sorry, 15 minutes of community conversation, and then we'd love at the end just to hear any comments that bubbled up, that folks would be willing to contribute to everybody in the room. So, if you could find a table, administrators, if you could just make sure you're, there's someone at each spot, that would be great, and enjoy the conversation. Okay, so if we could all come back together. Last time, with a much more structured discussion, we actually went around and had each table speak. I think, given the topic and the conversations that have been happening at the tables, we'll just take comments from anybody who feels like sharing something that bubbled up in their conversation, and if there are no comments, that's okay. What we will do afterwards is, similar to last time, I'll combine all these notes and we'll get them out to the public, and we'll also, as an administrative team, consider our follow-up to make sure that if you have questions or ideas, that we get back to all of you and our community as a whole. So, any thoughts that folks want to share right now? Steve? Yes, please.
I'm just wondering, what's the possibility of people, you know, parents or community members coming in and just being able to, I mean, I feel like I'd like to wander the halls, and when a kid's suddenly pushed out of a classroom, have there be a granny or grampy out there to say, "Hey, honey, what's happening?" You know, and just give him a hug and listen. You know, do you have to be trained, or can you just be a kid advocate in the hallway?
Thank you. So, at Dyke Newell School, we actually started a program last year trying to get a grandparent or several into the building. We have a partnership with an organization that functions through United Way, and the individuals do have to meet some criteria and have some training to become those volunteers in our buildings, but there is an opportunity at Dyke Newell, so I would love to talk more with you about that, or whoever might be interested. We've been looking for some grandparents for our classrooms for over a year now and haven't found any, so feel free to give me a call, and I can connect you with that organization and get you more information on it.
Any other thoughts or questions? Okay. There you go, Steve.
Okay. I just wanted to thank everyone for coming, for sure. We had a very good discussion at our table anyways, and I'm sure the others did as well. And the notes of those discussions will be posted, I think you said, on our website, so you'll have an opportunity to see everyone's comments. And if there are lingering questions and issues out there, which I'm sure there are, it's a huge topic, and I'm not even going to say we scratched the surface. I don't even think we got that deep. But maybe it's a topic we can revisit again, you know, this year, in this cycle of workshops, so we'll take a look at those notes as the administrators submit them. But anyways, if there are no further comments, again, I do thank everyone for showing up. We are talking about doing another workshop, this, not in the context of this, but perhaps a different topic during the March or April? Patrick, where are you? March or April, not next month, but March or April, so we will be doing another workshop. And again, if notes and comments dictate, we'll revisit this before the end of the year as well, so, thanks very much. Yep.
And one final round of applause for our speakers, please. Thank you. Okay. Have a good evening. Thank you.